Ladies and gentlemen, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. As you come through tonight, which would be to my right, to everyone else's left, there's a set of double doors. You walk through those double doors, there's a desk. On that desk is a sign-in sheet. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City clerk, we have a roll call.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Here.
Palladino?
Here.
Pratt?
Here.
Sher?
Here.
Soha?
Present.
Stuccio?
Here.
Beer?
Here.
Wolfram?
Here.
Mayor Sotter?
Here.
All present here.
Thank you, Katie. We'll move into approval of agenda. City manager and members of council have any changes they'd like to see made to the agenda tonight? Yes, sir, Councilman Soha.
Um, Mr. Mayor, with your approval, approval of council, I'd like to add these two pictures that were printed out of a tent that was at Mrs. Stocks Park. It was that evening night, uh, their communications petitions for letter C.
Yes, sir, I will pay with that. Everybody on council all right with that? Is that a motion, sir?
Yes.
Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Beer, to add, uh, two pictures to communications petitions, which are pictures of tents in Mrs. Stocks Park. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, any other changes, fellas, ladies and gentlemen? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
No move.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We've got an agenda. We'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to wander the podium. And remember, this is on agenda items only. So if you're going to speak during this particular public comment period, make sure it has a direct tie to something that's present on the agenda tonight. The podium is now open.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Hebert. I work at Hillsdale Community Thrift, and I've been involved with the store since the beginning in two thousand eighteen. My biggest concern is the city being left behind. The city that I'm speaking of is this eight thousand residents that live and work here, many for multiple generations. For example, on tonight's agenda, the sale of the property of Galloway Drive to Hillsdale College. To be clear, I can understand a business such as a college wanting to grow and expand. My concern is the impact on the local citizens that live and try to survive here. The families living in Hillsdale earning the average income will not be regular patrons of the fine amenities. Most never utilize the airport, and more airplanes landing at the airport is not going to decrease the number of children receiving free meals at school. Pretty new buildings downtown are not going to provide solutions to the shortage of affordable housing. More upscale stores are not going to house the hundreds of homeless youth, five hundred in this county. Families and individuals of all ages and circumstances. The new development on Galloway Drive promises to create jobs. Besides the construction, they're offering more low-wage service jobs. It's been clear how locals are viewed based on the expressions of multiple people who represent the college, describing Hillsdale as a very poor community with many social disorders. Seems reasonable that many locals have concerns with the amount of people that are connected to the college that sit on city council, boards and committees making decisions as we watch the college get what they want and the residents are paying the taxes. With that in mind, my question is this. With a two million dollar annuity, how is that money going to be used on the local residents? How will this fill a real-life need? Since the start of the emergency shelter in April of twenty-three located at Hillsdale Community Thrift, when you as a council created an ordinance to remove camping on city property, Camp Hope has had, now wait, a hundred and sixty people coming to our shelter to get seeking shelter. A homeless task force report was made and approved by the council to build a shelter and, of course, a jail. Let's focus on a shelter because alone Hillsdale Community Thrift can no longer afford to support the residents of Hillsdale struggling with homelessness. We can no longer do it. That's right, we feel alone, very alone. We have a wonderful support from community with donations and local businesses, but we need help from this city and other agencies. The local nonprofits and agencies that are overworked and underfunded in this community are struggling and will continue to struggle without the city taking on income levels, all income levels, into consideration. All income levels. To conclude, I restate my concern of this council's intentions of supporting the local residents with the same support given to the residents of Hillsdale College. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Any more public comment on agenda items?
Good evening, council. Andrew Geltzer, Ward four. Um, I'm here speaking to, uh, an annuity business, IDF, and key for hotel over amendment request. Um, this past Monday or a week ago, uh, from today, council members and ten board members had the opportunity to go into work, the building, the worksite, see the progress that they've made, the challenges that they've overcome. They then asked for their promissory note to be extended to December. After the progress that we saw, we unanimously moved to, uh, change the date to April fifteenth. They're working hard and they're, um, they're making a ton of progress. And this is the point in the project where support is needed, encouragement is needed. And if there's any questions on how TIPA handled this, I'm here, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Any more public comment regarding agenda items?
Um, Shannon Gainer, Ward four. Um, I just have a question on your agenda itself. Why is the city manager's report after public comment? But if I want to comment on what the city manager says, then I can't because he's already, he's after public comment. So I think that does us an injustice to have our city manager not comment so that we can listen to what he has to say and possibly comment. He should be moved up on your agenda.
Thank you, Shannon. Any more public comment regarding agenda items?
I would like to speak about, uh, the transfer of the resolution for the obsolete property. I actually went and talked to Kim before your last meeting in the morning. She told me this was not necessary because it was like a woman changing to a married name, same owners and everything. I said, yeah, but they sold the property to another LLC. Maybe it was only a dollar, but they still sold it. She said, well, it wasn't necessary, didn't need done. So what a surprise it is to see this on the agenda that says it has to be done. So, and that, the other question I have is, so forty-two Hillsdale has not been paying their fair share of taxes on that property because they did not have the obsolete resolution, property resolution. So they've been basically stealing off the taxpayers, not getting their fair share of that. Other thing is, I wanted to talk about was the, uh, property on the college's after. In the consideration in line five, um, it talks about, it says that, uh, uh, agreement, the college agrees to make payment to the city within ninety days of approval of the vacant, vacation of this summit property, and it gives the amount there. Then in A, it says the lump sum payment we made, and it doesn't say a word about Galloway Drive. So how much are they paying for Galloway Drive? This says what they're going to pay for someone, doesn't say a word about Galloway Drive, which, that's more power than the city. So maybe they'll get twice the budget. My other question is, and this is more for Dave than anybody else. I know at the one meeting I asked for a zoning permit from Adams Township, and you said that would be gotten before the property started building out there. I would like to see a copy of that out for you, that. You didn't say that in the meeting, so.
Thank you, Jack. Any more public comment regarding agenda items? Seeing none, we'll close the podium and we'll move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and BPU claims of August first, paperwork of August first, city council minutes of August fifth, finance minutes of August fifth, cemetery minutes of August seventh, community development minutes of August seventh. There's a park use agreement with Indiana Outboard Association. Then a number of BPU items, BPU automated doors, BPU VMI contract extension, BPU water meter order, BPU Eaton C two S X D electric meter purchase, BPU D grant tax message notification system, and BPU, uh, waste water treatment plants, Hillsdale Service Pump One V F D. Any discussion on any of these items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Or?
Motion on the floor for Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Beer to approve the consent agenda. May I have a roll call, city clerk?
Councilperson Palladino?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Sher?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sotter?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Hines, report.
Thank you, Katie. We will move into communications petitions, item letter A, airport operational discussion, and I see Ginger here. Is this what you came for, Ginger?
What I came for.
Very good.
Well, good evening, council members and mayor. Um, my name's Ginger Moore. I'm the airport manager in Hillsdale. And, uh, I hear a lot of buzz about the airport here and there because we have been doing some great upgrades lately. Because we do have a whole different clientele than we used to have when I was out here in nineteen sixty-three when it was built. That was all a bunch of small little airplanes. Airport was buzzing. It was a great economic driver for the city then, and it's still a great economic driver for the city now. It's just gone into a different way that all aviation has been going towards, which are the big jets. Now, the jets bring in an awful lot of money to this community. You might not see it being handed over to us at the airport, but it brings money into, let's say, my agency, Roots Craft, the college. They then hire people who then make money off of the money that's been brought in. We're the front door to this beautiful community. And a lot of people see this for the first time and decide, I think I'm going to move my business there. I have two new tenants. Both of them chose Hillsdale because of the airport. Both of them have their own businesses, one's in Hudson, one's in Litchfield, but they came here for the airport. And, uh, we are what's called the, uh, public use general utility airport, which means we do local air transportation, meaning with, you know, people have their own airplanes. We service commercial airplanes that come in. We do not have a commercial airline service in an airport our size. We're just a great economic, you know, driver for this town, and especially in the future as it keeps going forward, more things happening. We're, we're perfect. Some of these businesses wouldn't come to this town if they couldn't fly in because time's money. And they'll go somewhere else where they can get right. And, uh, so we, we're really lucky. It also provides emergency services. We get emergency people coming in, helicopters, ambulances coming to pick people up. And, uh, it's a quick way to get somebody, some help if they're hurt. Uh, we also have pilot training. Right now, pilots are just scarce. There's so much flying going on, it's hard to get enough pilots. We do have a flight school that is renting space from us, just a little office space plus a hangar. That's called the Hillsdale Flight Center. They're new. They have one airplane, and we're lucky to have them. The last time we had a flight school, I was the flight instructor. And when I became manager, I decided not to flight instruct anymore. I've been trying so hard to get a flight school here, asking people to put satellites, you name it, anything here. So we were really lucky to have Travis Stapleton, who is from the Hillsdale area, bring a flight school into town. Uh, airports, you know, of all sizes, they require to meet a lot of federal aviation administration regulations. And maintaining an airport requires a lot of investment. Um, the FAA then provides grants and entitlement money to the airports to help them keep up with improvements that they need to do. And with us, to be able to handle the weights of the type of aircraft that come in now and the pavement that has to be constantly taken care of, and we have to maintain the grounds to keep the trees down because you can't have trees growing around an airport. That takes a lot of work right there. I'm lucky I've got Steven Boyd, who does amazing job up there. So, once again, I can't stress enough about an economic, you know, driver, the citizens of this city of Hillsdale. We do, I remember a last city council hearing that they wanted to know about fees at an airport. The little guys under six thousand pounds, which are most of a single-engine, smaller four-seater, maybe six-seater airplane, we do not charge them to land. And if we did, they'd go away. It's just, we all, all, all the airports agree that we're down. Um, they use hundred low lead fuel, which we sell at the airport. We only sell about eight thousand gallons of hundred low lead a year. We don't make as much money on that. It's because it's very competitive. The little airplanes will go somewhere else and they can get it cheaper. Where the jets are where we really make the money because the jets are coming here for a certain purpose. They're not chomping around for fuel. They're coming right into Hillsdale. And so with that, we do have fees for the larger commercial aircraft. For single-engine turbo props, it's fifty dollars to land, but we waive that fee if they buy at least fifty gallons of fuel. For multi-turbo props, they get a hundred dollar landing fee, but we waive that with a hundred gallons of fuel. With jets between twelve thousand and thirty thousand pounds, which are the smaller jets, we charge them two hundred to land or waive it with two hundred gallons of fuel. Jets thirty thousand and up, it's four hundred dollars to land or four hundred gallons of fuel. We also have call-out fees of a hundred dollars an hour if they come in after our hours and we have to have someone there. So that pays for their wages. And, uh, we also can offer a ground power unit at a hundred dollars an hour to help them when they're on the ground not to use their batteries. Um, so we do have fees and they work very well, and we have way higher fees than Jackson, Bullwater, Adrian. And that's because of the type of aircraft we do get in here. When I first started doing this, we thought, oh, well, let's charge a landing fee of like fifty dollars. But we were getting very large jets, over forty thousand pound jets coming in for a hundred fifty dollars. So it's like, well, that's not right because they wouldn't buy gas because we wanted to sell them gas. So we started, I helped the, the fees on everything, and they don't even work it out. They, they, they're used to paying fees that at bigger towns, and they know that's just part of the deal, doing business so that we can handle that type of aircraft right from the two coasts here. Now, um, some people, if they don't know, our airport, we're on about five hundred and eighty-five acres of land. We have a farmer that gets, I think leases out about two hundred and some acres. Uh, we have a brand-new apron. I say brand-new, it's about eight years old now, it seems to be. That's, uh, a hundred and seventy feet by five hundred and twenty-five feet, which is where our new terminal is being built. We have a new fuel facility out there, and that's where a lot of the new developments are going to go, probably to that new, uh, apron. We have eighteen little T hangars. They're quite old, kind of reggae, but they're all filled up. Everybody wants to take a T hangar lately, so we've got those filled up. We've got two corporate hangars, both are filled up, and also a terminal hangar that we rent to a mechanic. We have twenty-four-hour fuel. We have, we are F Fuel branded, which is a great brand of fuel out of Ann Arbor. We have contract fuel, which is what some of the larger jets use where they can pull their money to get fuel cheaper from the distributor. We, uh, get points to pilots for their, you know, different things, hotels, that type of thing. We have a fuel truck, which has over-the-wing and single-point fueling. Single-point is a, a larger hose that goes usually to the bottom of the aircraft and can fill up the tank. It's to take both tanks at the same time, and it's a very fast way, which is most of the way larger jets give fuel. We have Hillsdale Flight Center, the flight school. We have Synergy Aircraft Specialty Maintenance Facility. We have the Civil Air Patrol Squad in number sixty-four. And we have a fly-in, the second Sunday of September every year. And this year is going to be a great one. We've got hopefully a Chinook coming in with a static display. We'll have airplane rides, helicopter rides, car cruising, breakfast with exchange club. Uh, we've got a DJ, we've got a food truck in the afternoon. So we just have to hope on the major ways some of it. So, any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Ginger. Any questions for Ginger? Go ahead, Councilman Palladino.
Uh, we've been discussing a lot about fees, raising fees to achieve revenue neutrality in certain departments, DPS, dialer ride, uh, parks. When were these fees set?
Well, since I've been managing it about seven years is when it started at fifty for everybody, not the little guys, but the big guys. And we moved it up a little bit to, I think our highest was two hundred for aircraft over forty thousand pounds. And it's been about a year and a half, maybe a year, can't remember, but I raised it up to the prices that we have.
Okay, so you're actively monitoring those? Um, in the time that you've been here, or if you have deeper institutional knowledge, has the, has the airport ever been revenue neutral or, uh, a net positive for the general fund?
Not that I'm aware of. That could be. We are hoping to be self-sufficient, but the airport wasn't taken care of that well for a while. And we had to put a lot of money into it to fix it up, to be able to handle everything that's coming in. And once we get every, our projects done, which we're getting done with the new terminal and such, hopefully with the fuel sales and everything, we'll be able to be self-sufficient.
Okay, and you have a plan mapped out for that?
Plan, like a year, like a year, I think, yeah.
Okay. Um, now, in terms of economic development, you're, you're arguing that it, it brings businesses that otherwise wouldn't be here. Do you have any idea of the net effect on revenue for those businesses coming in?
You know, the MDOT does what they call CBA, and if I just finish that and they're supposed to give me the report, and they'll even come in and explain it to everybody because they do it, all the numbers and everything. And so I'm hoping to get them to come and speak to you guys about how they assess the funds and everything and taking into account the jets and the money that gets spent in Hillsdale, the jobs, and how it trills down and the entire community.
Okay, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see that report because if we've been paying into this fund for, you know, decades potentially, it would be nice to have at least some evidence that we're not simply transferring wealth to, to, uh, corporations that want to move here to, to utilize subsidized airport services. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Any more questions? Councilman Sher.
Ginger, I want to thank you for what you're doing. I want to thank Jason Walters, what he did. Before that, the airport was just ignored. It sat there, it was an embarrassment. You guys make great strides. It does bring jobs into this community. Myers is a prime example of it. And we got to stay in the twenty-first century, to stay in the twenty-first century. We can't go backwards. And the airport is part of that growth and development. We don't have an interstate in this county. We have the airport, and it does bring people in because I can hear those jets flying over my house a lot. Thank you.
Councilman Beer.
Ginger, a quick question. Uh, what's the timeframe for the new terminal?
The new terminal should be finished probably late spring, early summer.
Okay. And a follow-up question, um, for the acres that currently the airport has, is there, are there any plans? You were saying that you're completely fill of your T hangars and your other sources.
Yeah, we're completely filled.
Is, is there a demand that exceeds what you're able to provide right now?
We, we have, uh, we have a waiting list. A lot of the people that are on the waiting list don't have an airplane. Hangars right now are hard to come by everywhere in the United States because no one wants their airplane out in the weather. So all of a sudden, it seems like even the older airplanes, they want to put in a hangar. So, um, a lot of people, when they're even thinking about buying an airplane, they want to see if they can get a hangar first. So they get themselves on a list. And so far, what I've found is when we have a, a vacancy, I'll call down the list, and there may be four or five people. And sometimes none of them are ready. There's always someone calling though, says, hey, do you guys have a hangar? And it's something, and great, there you go, you got one. So they, as soon as they come available, we're pretty good.
Are, are there any plans to build additional hangars?
Well, they, the plans are to build new T hangars out on the new apron. They're beyond, just north of the new terminal that's being built. But, uh, it's hard to get funding for T hangars because they're a revenue, um, maker. So oftentimes, it's hard to get grants for something like that, although we're talking with them, got to try to get something. Um, hangars have become a lot more expensive to build than they used to be. So price of renting a hangar will, oh, substantially from what we've got now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Palladino.
Do you have a rough estimate of the breakdown of college use of the facility, hospital, emergency services, private recreational? I don't even know what the major categories would be, but do you have an estimate there?
Well, what I've estimated is the college, not the college itself, but their customers are about sixty-five to sixty-eight percent of the jet traffic that comes into town. So the rest would be kind of divided up between some of the others. I mean, we do get a number of, uh, light flights that come in, especially if the hospital already has a helicopter there or something, another one's coming in, that type of thing. But there's a lot of smaller businesses that come in. I know everyone keeps saying every time there's a jet out there, oh, it's that Pat Sage X jet. Everybody thinks it's his Pat Sage X airport. Well, he only comes twice a year. He's not even our, on our top five biggest customers. So, and one of our biggest customers isn't related with college at all.
Okay, if, if the college has such an, such an institutional tie to this, you know, sixty to seventy percent of the use, have we ever approached them and said, look, if this is worth it to you, can you cover this gap in the general fund? This hundred thousand dollars plus per year, um, because you're getting the lion's share of the usage?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Many times.
Any more questions for Ginger? Ginger, regarding, um, giving the pilots an opportunity to purchase fuel in lieu of the fee, the landing fee, have you found that to be a big incentive in purchasing fuel?
Oh, yeah, because if they have time, sometimes they're just doing a drop-off and take right back off, and they don't want to take the time to get fuel. But what would you rather do? Get four hundred dollars worth of fuel that you're going to use or pay four hundred?
Absolutely.
So it, it does, it definitely drives the jet to a sales.
Awesome, great idea. Any more questions?
Sorry, last one. Um, is the flight school purchasing fuel as well from our facility? Okay, so that's why the rent-
They have a T hangar as well.
Okay, because I think they were charging, what, a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for a lesson?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
For the airplane alone, that didn't put the strike.
Okay, so it seems like the revenue would allow rental price of far more than two fifty, but they're using the services which are contributing to the revenue?
Correct.
Any more questions for Ginger? Thank you, Ginger.